I would like to call to order the October 15, 2019 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
President.
Todd McLeod.
Here.
Peter Pivko. Let the record reflect that Peter Pivko is not present. Deborah Raine.
Here.
Andres Peradello. Let the record reflect that Andres Peradello is not present. Mark Pateman.
Here.
Christopher Chase.
Here.
Scott Holtz.
Here. All right. The next order of business is approval of the September 17, 2019 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Any corrections or changes? If not, I look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. And next on the agenda is, oh, excuse me, I see Mr. Peradello aboard members, looks locked out. Could someone help him, please? Let the record reflect that Mr. Peradello is about to join us. Next on our agenda is reported of the planning staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Rick Green, Assistant City Administrator, filling in for Angela Van, who's on vacation. So, a few quick slides. So, the projects that you reviewed that have gone to the City Commission since our last meeting, 3907 South Flagler. This was an interesting case, a nine-story multifamily development with 27 units. There was a motion made at that particular meeting to approve the project. There was not a second, and then the City Commission went on to the next item. By our zoning code, the City Commission has to act either in favor or against the application, so we are going to have to bring it back to the Commission within 60 days, which is no later than the December 2 City Commission meeting. So, I've advised the mayor and the applicant of that, so there's more to come on this. Couple other things. Our fiscal year ended September 30. I'm going to be discussing this at a developer outreach meeting October 24 here. Again, anyone's welcome to attend that. But some of the interesting metrics, you see our planning fees the last five years have remained at about a half a million dollars, a tremendous constant increase over the four or five years before that. Our business tax revenues are staying at about a $3.8 million clip, fairly consistent. And then, very surprising, their building permit revenue was almost $3 million over budget, at a record $12.2 million. So, we've been staying very busy. When you compare all of the revenues received by the Development Services Department over the last five years, you see that we witnessing about a 50% increase over fiscal year 15. So, it's been a very busy time, but you guys know that. Could you see all the projects coming forward? That, of course, translates to an increased property value, seven, eight years in a row of consistent growth, averaging about 10% a year. I'll also mention that we are finalizing plans for an economic plan. Christopher Rug, who was in the mayor's office, is now working under Development Services, and we've identified five goals. So, we've reached out to a great number of different groups to seek their input on the plan. We should be workshopping this with the Commission very shortly. And one thing I'm very excited about, I've been talking about this project for two years, but we are probably days or weeks from signing a contract with Tyler Technologies to basically redo our entire permitting software. We've been using Community Plus for 20-plus years, so we are very close. The contract is complete. We're just simply waiting on their signature now, and then we'll have the mayor sign it. We hope to start implementing this new system in February. We're going to roll it out over a long period of time, 18 to 24 months. We're going to have training for both not only city staff, but also the private sector as well. This is a review that has taken place with 12 separate departments in the city. 120 people were involved in this. So, it certainly will help planning, building, zoning, code enforcement, but it's also setting up processes for other departments like utilities, engineering, billing. We've looked at every planner or several processes throughout this process. So, right now, when a plan gets submitted for a building permit, it goes through a review, and the plan gets passed from one person to the other. Our goal is we want to be 100% paperless. So, in the future, when the system is implemented, somebody submits a building permit, it's going to be reviewed by all the trades at one time. So, we're significantly expecting this to reduce our review times as well. So, we're excited about the beginning of this process. For those of you who are frustrated Dolphin fans like me, I would like to point out that if you don't follow baseball, our two local teams, the Washington Nationals and Houston Astros, are vying for their pennants. So, it would be great if our two spring training teams end up facing each other in the World Series.
Astros are up 2-0.
I was taking that as well. Thank you, Brian. So, we will see, but that would be a feather in our cap if both of our teams make it to the World Series. I'll remind you that we are to elect a chair and a vice chair at the close of this meeting. I also want to publicly acknowledge Paul Grelick, our senior planner, who will be leaving us to join the private sector. Paul, will you stand? So, I want to thank Paul for all his hard work. And he tells me that he was recruited. He was not soliciting, but that's what happens when you have good people. But I want to wish my best for Paul. But that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Thank you.
So, those first couple charts were so impressive. And was it, would you say that this has just been driven by development volume primarily, all those increases in the various metrics? Or did you raise fees in there, or was it really just driven by the volume?
It's not really fees. Mr. Chase, I think it's more just the volume of work. Again, I'm certainly not saying that our department is perfect, but we try to employ, you know, a private-type mentality when we approach developments. We try to be user-friendly. We try not to be bureaucratic, and we try to make it a place where people want to build. What we want to hear, what we like to see, is when people do a project in West Palm Beach, hopefully it was a pleasant experience, and then they'll want to come back and build again. But it wasn't really a question of raising fees. We haven't really raised our fees very much in the last five years.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson. As we end our fiscal year and begin a new one, I just want to take a moment to thank my fellow board members and to reintroduce them to the community. I'm very proud of this board. I think it's an exceptional board. I just want to reintroduce them to you. Starting on my right is Christopher Chase. Mr. Chase is the Market President of SunTrust for Palm Beach County and the Treasure Coast. He is a BA from Harvard University and MBA from Columbia Graduate School of Business. Before joining SunTrust, Mr. Chase worked for Solomon Brothers of New York, providing corporations, entrepreneurs, and private equity firms with advisory and financing assignments. More recently, he worked at Bank of America Securities as an investment banker managing director. Mr. Chase is a board member of the Brokerage and Chamber of Commerce and United Way of Palm Beach County. He has also acted with several other organizations, including Palm Beach Development Board, Harvard University, Collegiate School, and Make-A-Wish Foundation. Next to him is Deborah Raine. Ms. Raine is a retired educator and administrator with the School District of Palm Beach County. She holds a bachelor's degree from Savannah State University and two master's degrees, one in administration and supervision from Nova University, the other multicultural education and foundations from Florida Atlantic University. Ms. Raine is a member of the West Palm Beach Nominated Committee and previously worked on three other city committees. She also has served in leadership positions with the Salvation Army, Delta Heritage Foundation, Trinity Community Development Foundation, and African-American Research Library and Cultural Center. To my immediate right is Todd McLeod. Is it McLeod or McGee?
McLeod.
McLeod. I always pronounce it wrong. And he's also vice chair of our board. Mr. McLeod is a civil engineer. He is vice president of One Evergreen Inc., which has offices in Zephyr Hills and West Palm Beach. He received his Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from the University of Florida. He obtained a graduate certificate in urban planning and regional planning from Florida Atlantic University. Mr. McLeod has significant experience in design, permitting, and construction administration for private development and public works projects. He is a member of the American Society of Civil Engineers, the Palm Beach chapter of the Florida Engineering Society, and on the Regulatory Peer Review Committee of the South Florida Water Management District. The next person I wish to present is not here. It's Peter Pivko. Mr. Pivko just had shoulder surgery last evening. He is an AIA architect. He has extensive experience in acquisitions, project approvals, designs, and construction of residential mixed-use office, shopping, and industrial projects. Mr. Pivko holds a Bachelor of Architecture from Carleton University at Ottawa and a diploma civil and construction technology in Montreal. He has served on other boards at communities where he has lived, including hospital and university boards in Canada and a planning board in New Jersey. To my immediate left is Andre Peradello. Mr. Peradello is a landscape architect and the principal designer of Andrew Peradello Design. He has a degree in landscape architecture from the University of Arkansas and is a member of the American Society of Landscape Architects. He has won design awards in Arkansas, Missouri, and Puerto Rico. To his left is Mark Pateman. Mr. Pateman is the managing principal for Cushman and Wakefield in Palm Beach County. Cushman and Wakefield is an international brokerage firm, and Mr. Pateman is a broker who specializes in office leasing and investment sales. He received his undergraduate degree from Skidmore College in Government Affairs and his law degree from the University of Miami. Mr. Pateman is a member of the Society of Industrial and Office Realtors and the Urban Land Institute. He has also served with the West Palm Beach Downtown Action Committee. And finally, Scott Holtz, who is our first alternate. Mr. Holtz received his BA from George Washington University and his JD from the University of Florida. After graduating law school, Mr. Holtz served as a prosecutor in the Miami-Dade State Attorney's Office. He is now in private practice with his own firm, Prestea Holtz. Mr. Holtz is a member of the West Palm Beach Nuisance Abatement Board and has previously served on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Additionally, he has volunteered for the Port of Palm Beach Audit Committee, the Kiwanis, the West Palm Beach Police Foundation, Temple Emanuel Palm Beach, and the Palm Beach County Bar Association. As an alternate, Mr. Holtz will participate fully in our proceedings, whereas here, a board member is absent, he will also vote. And lastly, to introduce myself, I'm a mediator, arbitrator, and lawyer. I conduct mediations for the federal and state courts and arbitrations and mediations for the American Arbitration Association, for which I am a member of its national roster of neutrals. I hold an undergraduate degree from Vanderbilt University and a law degree from Duke. My community activities had included Sunfest as legal counsel and member of the executive committee. The American Red Cross were my past chapter chair, and the Providence Park Neighborhood Association, of which I serve as president. This is your city's planning board, professionals who voluntarily give up their time to help make the city of West Palm Beach a better place. I thank all of you for your service. And that concludes my remarks. That brings us next to the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. Does anyone have anything to disclose? We now move into the public hearing portion of our meeting and the swearing in of speakers. Would anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
No.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. We will then proceed with planning board case numbers 1839 and 1839A, and we will first hear from the applicant, Mr. Oyer, who I see you brought some help with you tonight.
I did. I brought the big guns with me in case there's a problem.
We'll have to be extra polite to you now.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and planning board members. For the record, Harvey Oyer of Shuts &amp; Bowen. On behalf of my client, which is the owner of 4700 North Congress Avenue, also with me tonight is Brian Seymour, who represents JFK North Hospital, which is directly across the street and is actually the ground owner of the property, or the long-term lessee. So, we are the applicant with their consent. Pretty straightforward request. It is a little over five-acre site on the east side of Congress Avenue. It is part of the JFK North Medical Campus. This is a medical office building. It's an existing 45,000-square-foot, three-story building. It is in a future land use designation of CS, which is community service, as is the entire JFK campus. We're seeking to change that, and we're also seeking a rezoning. The zoning is also CS, so currently comp-planned and zoned CS. We are requesting two things from you tonight, your approval of a small-scale future land use map amendment to change the flu designation from community service to commercial, with a simultaneous rezoning to change the zoning designation from community service to office commercial. As I stated, the site is already developed. We're not proposing any new development. What we're trying to accomplish, folks, is to allow a general office user to utilize the building. Building has a high vacancy rate. It's restricted to only medical office. There is a lot of medical office space available in this area, and this is a perfectly good general office use building, and we can't put the tenant in it. And by the way, the tenant is a corporate relocation to West Palm Beach from outside of West Palm Beach. This is an area of the city that needs jobs. This will provide jobs, many of them high-paying jobs, in a building that's largely vacant. So, if you're wondering what is the impetus for this request, that is it. There's no new development, as I stated, no additional traffic impacts. Same offices will be utilized by people not in the medical profession. We have to meet one or more of the following standards be considered for a future land use amendment. We believe we meet two of them. Staff agrees. I'm delighted to go into detail if you'd like to hear it, but I don't think it's controversial or in dispute in any way. And we have to meet eight standards for rezoning, as you know. We believe we meet all eight. Staff concurs. Delighted to go into detail in any one of those if you'd like. They were all outlined in our justification statement and the staff report, which were included in your packet. There are no conditions of approval, and staff is recommending approval. So, in summary, we respectfully request the approval of the flu map amendment and the rezoning, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Let me start on this side. Chris? Deborah? Todd?
No.
Andre?
No questions.
I just have a question, not that it's maybe relevant. I'm just more curious. Is the proposed user, do they have any ties at all to the medical business? Is there a reason they desire this location being so close to JFK?
So, to answer the first question, they do nothing in the medical field, and they're not competitive with JFK in any way. I can't disclose who they are, but they have a corporate headquarters nearby that they are, they've grown their way out of, and they need additional space, and this is very proximate to the remainder of their corporate headquarters.
And do you think this is analogous to what we did on Clemata Street when we allowed space had been reserved for restaurants or retail stores to allow them being used for commercial because it was no longer viable? They tried unsuccessfully to fill those spaces?
So, I don't know if it's directly analogous, same idea, of course, but, you know, that's an entirely different type of use from retailer, restaurant, to office. This is from office to office, and I would venture to say if the city could have approved it without the comp-plan amendment and rezoning, they would have. The problem is, is the CS district has a very limited list of permitted uses. CS is typically for churches, parks, universities. So, it was very limited. It was given to the JFK North campus, envisioning that it would always be a medical campus. So, we had to go through this process simply because it's not a permitted use.
I understand. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? If not, staff would like to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. One of our, is this the last evening we're going to see you, Paul?
It is, yeah.
Are you allowed to disclose where you're going?
I'm going to a local development company. I'll be working at a city place, so it won't be far.
Not too far, at least.
Yeah, not too far. But I just wanted to say on a personal note, thank you all very much. I've learned a great deal from each and every one of you, even though I look back at some of my first presentations and I cringe a little bit. I just want to say thank you, so I appreciate it.
So, you like to go first, and now that the applicant goes first, you'll be able to do that on behalf of your new employer?
Yeah, I didn't get to enjoy this very long. It was about a couple of months, but Harvey did a great job. I'm just going to summarize very briefly. It's community service to a commercial, future land use, community service and office commercial zoning. Importantly, no development is proposed, and the intent of the petition is to allow greater flexibility in office uses. So, that's really the thrust of this. Staff is recommending approval, and that concludes staff's presentation.
All right. Any questions of staff?
Short and sweet.
Would anyone for the public wish to be heard? And then we're bringing back to the board for discussion. Does anyone have an issue with this?
No.
If not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case number 1839 and 1839A.
Mr. Thomas, do we need to break these to two separate motions, or may we do them jointly? Okay.
Okay, so, making a motion to approve planning board case number 1839.
1839. Have we a second on this? Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously.
And I'll make a motion to approve planning board case number 1839A.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is planning board case number 862Z. And I think we'll hear from the applicant first. Is that Mr. Terry? Try clicking it twice. There you go.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Brian Terry with Insight Studio. I'm here on behalf of the applicants and property owners, Racetrack Petroleum, who own the property at, this is located within North Point Plan Development, just off 45th Street. This is probably the most familiar racetrack that most of us are, are familiar with within the city. Again, the site is located right there at the intersection of 45th and North Point, right as you enter into the office development. Again, this property was, is a part of the overall North Point CPD. We're not requesting any modifications to the zoning. Really, what we're here to talk to you this evening about is a knockdown and rebuild of that gas station to be more consistent with the markets that they build, their new, you know, the new look, so that this will be part of the same fleet and looks familiar with the new brand of racetrack gas stations that you see other places within the city and the county. So, overall site is about 2.23 acres. Again, it was originally constructed back in 1997. This is a major PD amendment, simply because we're exceeding the 5% threshold of allowing to expand a facility. We're going from, it's about a 2,900-square-foot facility today. The convenience store will now become about 5,400 square feet once it's rebuilt. Again, that's very consistent with the footprints that you see being developed throughout the area. The new fuel canopy will get constructed, but still the same 12 fueling positions will be there as well. So, really, not a significant change. You know, your eyeballs will see a much improved site, but functionally, it doesn't really look or act much different. There are no waivers, no variance requests as part of this application. This is what you see today. If you're driving down 45th, this is, these are the architectural renderings of what that new building will look like. Same thing with the canopy, very familiar, I'm sure. And this is a very diagrammatic look at what changes are occurring. So, again, the building footprint is basically in the exact same location as it is today, maybe shifted slightly north. You've got the fueling canopy in almost the exact same position as it is today. We're working with the county on getting a right out, a right in off of 45th Street. We're working with them to get a right in and right out of that location. And then you'll see just to the left of the building location, there's now an expanded parking lot area. If you've ever tried to actually go into that facility in the mornings, it's very busy, and parking is at a premium. So, adding a few more spaces with the increase of the flexibility and the offerings that they'll have within the market are going to be very beneficial. That's it. There's a quick look at the landscape plan. Again, we work quite closely with staff on trying to preserve and then ultimately relocate some of the larger oak trees that are on that property to try to maintain the tree canopy that is there. The criteria A through H that we have to abide by to obtain this PD amendment, staff, we believe we comply. Staff agreed that we comply, that we meet each one of those criteria. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Let me start with you, Scott. Mark? Andre?
No questions.
Any questions? Todd?
No.
Andre? Chris? Okay.
Thank you.
Very smooth presentation. Thank you. All right. Banning cleanup now.
All right. I'm going to be brief on this as well. So, to reiterate, it's a new C-store in place of the old, about 5,400 square feet, demolishing the existing canopy and construction of a new one. New racetrack logos throughout, new signage, rebranding, if you will, expansion of the surface lot, new sidewalk connections and crosswalk connections within the site, updated landscaping, and also particular attention on the 45th Street frontage, which staff was happy to see. Staff is recommending approval of the petition, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Thank you. Again, I asked the question, is this controversial? Does anyone have any concerns at all? And if not, I'll look for a motion.
I move for approval for planning board case number 862Z.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us then to case number 1823. And we'll hear from the applicant first.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Keith. I'm here to represent the townhomes at Coniston LLC. I have Ned Grace here, who is one of the owners. And before you is a proposed subdivision, major subdivision plat. The project is located at 403 Coniston Road, which is just west of Dixie Highway on Coniston. It's approximately .71 acres. It is in the zoning district MF 20. It allows up to 14 units. We're proposing 11 fee simple two-story townhome units that are approximately 21 to 2,200 square feet in size. This is a picture of the existing survey. There's three buildings on the site. All those buildings will be demolished as part of this project. The proposed site plan consists of two buildings. One's a six-unit building, one's a five-unit building, rear-loaded product where the garages face the adjacent 15-foot platted alley, and the front doors and front yards face Lambert. And then finally, this is the proposed plat. Because they're fee simple, we're going to have, or requesting approval of a subdivision plat, in which there will be seven, or excuse me, 11 fee simple lots on the site. We've reviewed the staff comments and agree with their conclusions, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions? Let me start on this then. Scott?
I'm just curious, do you have a price range yet for what these, these townhomes that'll be constructed, if they are constructed, would go for?
Well, we're still feeling the market out, but, you know, we're, we would like to market these in the upper fours, the lower fives, is what we're looking at at this particular time. For that square footage, it's about right for that marketplace.
Mark, any questions? Andre?
No questions.
Todd?
No questions.
Deborah? Chris? Can you, what are the existing buildings that are going to be taken down? How are they currently being used?
They're rental properties right now. They're just short-term rentals.
Okay. This will be then a significant improvement, would you say?
It's going to be a drastic improvement. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we hear from staff? Ms. Louie? Who drove Paul away?
Good evening, Linda Louie Planner for the record. So, this- as Chapter 177 of the Florida statutes. The condition of approval is listed on Page Two of the staff report, and that will require the applicant to submit the plat document for technical review prior to its execution. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions of staff?
I do have a question. So this is, we're not looking at any kind of site plan or architectural?
No. It's just the subdivision of the land.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Would anyone for the public wish to be heard? And if not, we're bringing back to the board. Once again, any, anyone find, we usually have such controversial cases, but these don't seem to be among them.
Same, not tonight.
Anyone have an objection? If not, we'll call the question then.
I just think this is a great example of strategic infill in an area that's a perfect transition from the commercial on Dixie to the single-family to the east, so this is a great thoughtful development.
And with that accolade, are you ready to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve Planning Board case number 1823 with conditions.
We have a motion, a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. That then brings us then to Planning Board case numbers 1831C, 1831D, and 1831E.
1813.
1813, forgive me. 1813C, D, and E. And we'll hear from the applicant first.
Good evening. For the record, George Gentile with 2GHO and representing Prime Development LLC, who is the property owner of this property. We're here tonight, as you said, for a request for a future land use amendment on portions of a property that is owned there on the corner and rezoning to get it prepared for the, the two ball teams that are going to definitely be in the World Series.
From your looks to God's ear.
And to make this, make this site a little bit more appropriate for that area near the stadium. This is the subject site. It's at the northwest corner of Military Trail and 45th Street. You might recall there is a small, was a small gas station on the corner and convenience store. There is a cell tower on the site that's a part of the project, and we just annexed in the piece to the west, which is the, you see there is the nursery. That site already has a future land use designation of commercial and zoning of general commercial, and as well as the, the original small convenience store gas station on the corner, which is also general commercial and also a flu of commercial. So we're kind of bringing the entire site into compliance with that commercial to allow a, a overall coordinated development. Case number 1813C is a small-scale future land use amendment to change the flu designation of 5.02 acres from industrial to commercial, because right now it is a commercial site. Case 1813D is a rezoning to change the zoning designation of 2.18 acres of the overall 5.68 acres from industrial to general commercial. And 1813E is a rezoning to change the zoning designation of 2.84 acres, the same of the overall site to, from industrial plan development to an industrial, and then to a future zoning to general commercial. So if that didn't confuse you, I'll try to explain it here. This is the site, you can see the, the general commercial site on the corner is already commercial, and we're trying to get the entire site coordinated. And again, this is what our proposed is, the future land use map amendment will be to, to commercial for that area, taking it out of the industrial, the land use. The, the D case is the existing industrial zoning district and changing that to a commercial, general commercial zoning district. And the last site, which is fronting 40, 45th Street, which is an existing IPD, we're changing that to a general commercial zoning district. Thus, the whole site then becomes general commercial, and we can combine it with the other site that was annexed in, which is also currently general commercial, and do a coordinated development there. We went through all of the level of services. This is a kind of a unique piece of property because it's serviced by water and sewer from the city of Riviera Beach, and it will continue to be serviced by them. We had them provide us capacity for potable water, and they have no problem with the potable water capacity for the comp plan. As you know, when we do a land use change, the land use has to be looked at, at the maximum square footage that could ever be built, which never really happens usually, but we have to look at those. The drainage also meets all the requirements. The wastewater, as we indicated, Riviera Beach has the capacity to take care of that, and the solid waste, of course, we received our approval from solid waste that they have no issues as well. So in a sense, we also meet the schools, and the traffic is also reviewed by the maximum potential of the land use, which is quite a bit more than we anticipate will be able to be built on the property, but we have to look at it that way, and we meet your traffic requirements. This is the overall project, and that's the requested site area, and that is all I have, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Let me start with you, Scott.
No questions.
Mark? Andre?
I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Yes, okay. Do you have a planned use for this? Do you have a?
It is going to be a, probably a commercial plan development, which we'll be bringing back to this body to review. It will have a mixture of, of retail, restaurant, and uses that will be appropriate for that area, which is actually improving quite extensively because of the stadium and everything that's been going on there. So we're, we're getting rid of the, the industrial and the incompatible uses of what's happening there right now, and we think it'll be a great benefit to the area.
All right, thank you. Can we hear from staff?
Just to add to that presentation, Linda Louie Planner for the record again, the Southwind Commercial Plaza just to the south just was recently approved for some commercial improvements to the site. Okay. So I'm just going to summarize the application quickly. This is a three-part request for future land use map amendment and rezoning. As noted in the staff report, the site is characterized by split land use and zoning, and the purpose of the application is to change the land use of the parcel for consistency with a single land use designation, as well as to prepare the site for future commercial development. So I'm briefly going to go over the three requests quickly. The first request is to change the future land use map, or the future land use of a portion of the site from industrial to commercial. The slide shows the existing and proposed future land use map. So as you can see, the proposed designation of the site is commercial. Staff has no objection because the proposed future land use is consistent and compatible with the surrounding land uses in the land use plan. So this slide shows the maximum development potential of the site for the existing and the proposed use. As you can see on the slide, the development potential for both land uses is equivalent, or it's, it's the same, based on the FAR, or the floor area ratio established by the comprehensive plan. So theoretically, commercial uses are more intensive than industrial uses, and therefore the demand in public facilities servicing the site as well as the surrounding area is expected to increase. So this table here summarizes the level of service for the public facilities with the proposed land use change. As you can see, the demand is expected to increase for water, sewer, as well as traffic. The applicant has provided certification letters from all the public service providers indicating that there is sufficient capacity to accommodate the land use change. So the second and third request is for the rezoning, for a portion of, for the portion of the site that zoned industrial as well as industrial plan development. This is the existing zoning map, and this is a proposed zoning map. The request is to consolidate the land use to general commercial, which is also consistent with the proposed future land use of commercial. In terms of inter-jurisdictional review, the Interlocal Plan Amendment Review Committee was notified of the future land use amendment on September 25th. Staff has not received any inquiries regarding the request. And based on staff's findings and analysis, staff is recommending approval of Planning Board case number 1813C for the future land use amendment, as it complies with the Florida statutes as well as the city's comprehensive plan. Staff is also recommending approval of Planning Board case number 1813D and E for the rezonings, since both rezonings complies with the rezoning standards of the city's zoning code. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
I have a question. It seems like it's an unmitigated benefit to the, to West Palm Beach to move an area like that, which I've driven by from industrial to commercial. Are there any negatives? Are there, are there any reasons, were there any things you thought about that, that were negative about changing it from industrial to commercial, or is it really just 100% a good thing?
I think it's a good thing. I mean, the area has seen a lot of commercial redevelopment in the recent past, especially with the development of the ballpark. Also, the site has been, been zoned industrial for many years, and there has not been a lot of industrial activity in the area, so I think the change would be beneficial to the area.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone for the public wish to be heard? And if not, I'll bring it back to the board. Does anyone have a concern or objection to these requests? If not, I think we should take them in three separate motions. I'll be looking for a motion.
I move that we approve Planning Board case number 1813C.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
I move that we approve Planning Board case number 1813D.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And finally, I move that we approve Planning Board case number 1813E.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And finally, I move that we approve Planning Board case number 1813E.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, I think that brings us then to our code revision cases, of which there are none. We move to other business, unfinished business, and as for new business, we have the annual election of officers. As you know, I presently serve as chair, and Todd presently serves as vice chair. Have we any nominations?
I move that we elect Steve Mayans as chair.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Excellent. For vice chair?
I move that we elect Todd McLeod as vice chair.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further, any other, I guess we should, any other nominations first? If not, all those in favor of Mr. McLeod, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Passes unanimously. If there's no other business, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.